Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the October 12th meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We are at Kitty Hawk Elementary School and the time is 5:06. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment of silence and also keep in your prayers Virginia Tillit and her family as she passed this week and she was a huge champion for our schools and our county. Thank you. Next, before, we'd like to, Ms. Lawler will do our welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Florence and Dr. Colvin, who are sitting right there for hosting us today, and give a little plug. The Kitty Hawk Carnival has probably been going on for 50 years and they are switching it this year to a Friday, November the 5th, and it's going to be from 4:00 to 8:30. So if you can come, please do. We are in the second month of a new school year and it's wonderful to have all the students back. All the schools are running smoothly and that is due to the dedicated principals, assistant principals, teachers, and teacher assistants. I appreciate all the hard work you do every day, and this includes our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, and our custodians. You all provide a necessary service to our schools that keep us going. All this organization is due to Dr. Farley and all the great people that work at Central Office. They contribute the structure and guidance that make our schools function so well. I am grateful that we have such a committed educational team. Lastly, I would like to welcome all of our new people that are at Dare County Schools. We have 62 certified new employees. That would be teachers, counselors, and other certified workers. We have 51 classified, so that would be teacher assistants, clerical, and receptionists. So that's 113 new people. Welcome to Dare County and I hope everybody has a great school year. At this point, I don't see, we were going to stop, salute the flag. Oh, it's, please stand and we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Margaret. Before we continue, I would like to read the following statement. On September 1st, the Dare County Board of Education voted to mandate masks to be worn inside all Dare County school buildings. Therefore, we ask anyone not wearing a mask at this time to please put one on. If you do not have one, there are some available to you near the entrance. Masks should be worn properly by covering both the mouth and nose throughout the meeting for everyone's safety. Anyone refusing to wear a mask will be asked to leave the building. This is a regularly scheduled business meeting that must proceed without disruption in order to conduct the business before the board this evening. Those in attendance will be expected to demonstrate respect for others' opinions, not interruption, not to interrupt the speakers or disrupt the meeting in any outbursts or personal attacks. As the presiding officer over tonight's meeting, I have the legal authority to direct individuals who interrupt, disturb, or disrupt this meeting to leave the meeting. However, it is my hope that we will not have to invoke this authority tonight. First thing we need to do is approve our agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Lawler.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody.
Madam Chair, I'd like to request addition to the agenda, please.
Sure.
So, Manuel High School received a $10,000 donation on Friday and following board policy, the board has to approve any donation over $5,000.
Right.
So if the board would consider adding to new business under 12C requests for donation approved by Manuel High School, would ask for that consideration.
So we will need a motion to modify the agenda, correct, Rich?
Yes, you need a motion to amend the agenda to add item 12C, acceptance of donation.
Okay, we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we amend the agenda to include 12C donations.
Motion by Ms. Lawler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hester. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we need to approve the amended agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Motion by Ms. Lawler to approve the amended agenda. Second by Mr. Tauber. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we have an approved agenda, amended agenda. Recognitions, Dr. Parker.
I appreciate that. We're very excited this evening to recognize some of our staff from Kitty Hawk Elementary School. I'm going to ask Principal Florence and Assistant Principal Colvin to come forward and share those recognitions with the board and the public tonight, but also want to thank Kitty Hawk Elementary School for hosting the board meeting tonight and for Dr. Florence's staff and the teachers here who have just been so hospitable to us. Now that we livestreamed the meetings, we have a tremendous amount, larger amount of setup and we have to get to the school earlier and we're setting up equipment and doing things. So I just am very thankful to Dr. Florence and his staff for helping us get set up this evening so that we could, we could have the board meeting here tonight. But we're very excited to recognize some of the wonderful staff here, so I'm going to ask Dr. Florence if he would to come forward and share those recognitions with the board. Greg?
Dr. Florence, before you get started, I do see a few of us that don't have masks on. If you could please put your masks on, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have a medical exam? Do you have proof of that? That's not the case.
I don't have a medical exam. My doctor said I should have a medical exam.
Rich, do I? You don't have documentation from the doctor?
No.
Could we call a recess to look into it?
I am the school counselor at Kitty Hawk Elementary School.
Is this possible? Is this possible? I don't think it is.
I'm a kindergarten teacher here at Kitty Hawk Elementary School.
We're going to call a recess to confer.
We have been working on our social-emotional learning calendar, which we call our SEL
We're in recess.
calendar, and we do it every day. And it's really important to us. It gives us those talking points that kids might not know about. For instance, one of the lessons we learned about was called the interrupting chicken. The story was very engaging, the kids loved it, but the meaning was really helpful in our classroom. When students were, you know, shouting out or anything while we were teaching, we talked about what that would feel like for them, and then they were able to connect that to our classroom and their real life. So whenever, you know, we do the little chicken wings like that, sometimes when I'm talking, they'll automatically go back to whole-body listening because they remember that story.
It's not good to interrupt. When my teacher does this, that means I go back to quiet and listening.
And then we always end the lesson, which is one of our favorites, with a mindful moment, and it just helps us get back to just that daily practice of taking just a minute to do something calm, and it's on the calendar every day. In 5th grade, we rarely get storybooks read to us anymore. It's all novel studies and things like that, so we dig really deep into stories. So it's nice, first thing in the morning, to just get to sit down and listen to a story with a great moral being read to them, and it just really sets the tone for the day in a positive way. One particular story that really resonated with my kids was Enemy Pie. When they saw that pop up, a lot of them hadn't heard that story in years, and so it was, "Oh, I love this book." And it just really makes them remember that if you spend time with somebody, you really get to see another side of them, and it just taught a great lesson that enemies are not always enemies. They can be good friends if you just give that person a chance. I also would like to thank Ms. Harrow and all of the elementary school guidance counselors for putting this together. You can tell there was a lot of thought put into it. The lessons are engaging and they're very appropriate, so the key points are things that we actually are dealing with in the classroom, and they really are a helpful tool. We really value the whole child, and I think that one of the things that Kitty Hawk does really well is that this starts at the top-down. Dr. Florence, Dr. Colvin, they created and built our master schedule to include this time to focus on students' social and emotional health, and without that, it probably would not be as successful. We start our day with the morning announcements. We have a little thought of the day, and teachers then roll into using the SEL calendar, and I think just that top-down effect and them showing us it's a priority and it's valued has really made the difference.
Thank you. That's very nice to see, the way y'all have set it all up. It looks, it's nice. Okay, next up, we have public comment. The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue for question and answers or for impromptu board responses. The board may determine whether to provide information or responses to public comment if it is necessary or appropriate at a later time. Concerns regarding school personnel are usually most effectively addressed with the administration at the Central Office or at other exist, I'm sorry, at Central Office or the administration. We'll call the meeting back to order.
As a state school librarian of the year. This annual award is presented to a media coordinator in recognition of outstanding performance in the school library media center. During the virtual presentation, Ellen and viewers across the state were treated to a video of Ellen's colleagues here in Dare County who each spoke and acknowledged her outstanding work. We have a couple snippets from that video right now.
As a child of books myself, I can't believe that I didn't think to grow up and be an elementary librarian. But all it took was shadowing you, Ellen, for one day at the Kitty Hawk Elementary Library to know that this is what I wanted to do. That you pour so much joy into your job and you teach each and every one of your students how to love reading, how to use technology to learn anything and everything they want, and you do it all while supporting your Dare Librarian Team. I am so proud of you and so excited about the impact and inspiration that you're going to make now as the North Carolina School Library Media Association's Librarian of the Year.
Hey, Ellen. To my mentor, to my friend, to my colleague, nobody deserves this more than you, and we're so happy and proud of you. Your enthusiasm is infectious, your energy is boundless, and we couldn't be happier than to have you on our team.
Couple of years ago, Ellen was our Dare County Schools Teacher of the Year, and her great work continues to be acknowledged across the state. Congratulations, Ellen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Florence, it's a great accomplishment to have a librarian for the whole state. That's really great. Congratulations. Next, we have Kelly Flora with our highlights, best part.
Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, the Board, Dr. Farley. The need for social emotional support for our students is one of many targeted areas of focus and a top priority for Dare County Schools. A dedicated team of professionals created a social emotional activity calendar to give to teachers for ideas, lessons, and strategies to incorporate within their daily routines. Some of the things that are covered: recognizing and dealing with emotions, conflict resolution, and how to be a friend, just to name a few. Tonight, we will take a look at the tremendous impact these small lessons provide for our children daily. Dr. Florence? Do you want to come up and introduce the clip we're getting ready to watch? Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
We're getting ready to show a brief video of instructional highlight of our social emotion lessons that happened daily. Our school counselor, Charlotte Herro, worked tirelessly with the other school counselors in the district and came up with a calendar. This was beginning last year, and we've rolled it into this year as well. And each day, our day starts in the classroom before kids even go to specials or even instruction begins with a social emotional lesson of the day. We go through all kinds of character traits each month, and it really helps get the kids focused on what's really important when it comes to just getting along and making things work smoothly before instruction begins in the regular academics. So Keith, could you roll that video, please? I hope you enjoy it.
So I am Charlotte Herro. I am the school counselor at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. This is my eighth year at Kitty Hawk. It's my 15th year being an elementary school counselor. I guess the summer of 2020, we realized we were going to have to deliver services a little bit differently, and we were trying to get creative with ways that we could reach all of our students, whether they were in the building, at home. And we knew we were going to have to be a lot more intentional about teaching some skills that would typically be happening regularly in the classroom. So the elementary school counselors collaborated, and we came up with the SEL calendar, and it includes a daily activity. Typically, it's either a story or a short video that the teacher shares with their class, and then some reflection questions that we hope inspire some fun discussion in their classrooms to kind of teach those skills.
My name is Nicole Farrell, and I am a kindergarten teacher here at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. We have been working on our social emotional learning calendar, which we call our SEL calendar, and we do it every day, and it's really important to us. It gives us those talking points that kids might not know about. For instance, one of the lessons we learned about was called the interrupting chicken. The story was very engaging. The kids loved it, but the meaning was really helpful in our classroom. When students were shouting out or anything while we were teaching, we talked about what that would feel like for them, and then they were able to connect that to our classroom and their real life. So whenever we do the little chicken wings like that, sometimes when I'm talking, they'll automatically go back to whole body listening because they remember that story.
It's not good to interrupt. When my teacher does this, that means I go back to quiet and listening.
And then we always end the lesson, which is one of our favorites, with a mindful moment, and it just helps us get back to just that daily practice of taking just a minute to do something calm, and it's on the calendar every day.
In fifth grade, we rarely get storybooks read to us anymore. It's all novel studies and things like that, so we dig really deep into stories. So it's nice, first thing in the morning, to just get to sit down and listen to a story with a great moral being read to them, and it just really sets the tone for the day in a positive way. One particular story that really resonated with my kids was Enemy Pie. When they saw that pop up, a lot of them hadn't heard that story in years, and so it was, "Oh, I love this book." And it just really makes them remember that if you spend time with somebody, you really get to see another side of them, and it just taught a great lesson that enemies are not always enemies. They can be good friends if you just give that person a chance.
I also would like to thank Ms. Herro and all of the elementary school guidance counselors for putting this together. You can tell there was a lot of thought put into it. The lessons are engaging, and they're very appropriate. So the key points are things that we actually are dealing with in the classroom, and they really are a helpful tool.
We really value the whole child, and I think that one of the things that Kitty Hawk does really well is that this starts at the top down. Dr. Florence, Dr. Colvin, they created and built our master schedule to include this time to focus on students' social and emotional health, and without that, it probably would not be as successful. We start our day with the morning announcements. We have a little thought of the day, and teachers then roll into using the SEL calendar. And I think just that top-down effect and them showing us it's a priority and it's valued has really made the difference.
That's very nice to see, the way y'all have set it all up. It looks, it's nice. Okay, next up, we have public comment. The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. This portion of the meeting is for the Board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue for question and answers or for impromptu board responses. The Board may determine whether to provide information or responses to public comment if it is necessary or appropriate at a later time. Concerns regarding school personnel are usually most effectively addressed with the administration at the central office or at other exist-- I'm sorry, at central office or the administration. Sorry, I lost my place. Or other existing board policies, and those alternatives are encouraged by the Board. The Board appreciates courteous and respectful presentations. Obscene, vulgar, indecent, abusive, threatening, or profane statements or statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Each person or organization will be granted three minutes. We will be using an electronic timing system that will provide the speaker with a green light when the time starts. The light will move to yellow when the speaker has one minute left. The red light indicates that time is up, and the speaker will be asked to leave the podium. Which part? The whole thing? The color code. Each person or organization will be granted three minutes. The electronic timing system will provide the speaker with a green light when the time starts. The light will move to yellow when the speaker has one minute left. When the light turns red, the speaker will be asked to leave the podium. You're welcome. First, we have David Bragg.
First, I would like to thank the Sheriff's Department and the Southern Shores Police Department for the great job they do for us here in Dare County. I fully believe they could handle any issue that would arise at a board meeting without assistance from the FBI. I find it hard to believe, after working for this country for over 33 years as civil servant with the Air Force and Coast Guard, I am now a domestic terrorist because of new standards set forth by the Department of Justice. I exceeded my time limit. It seems that the National School Board Association, NSBA, asks that the U.S. Department of Justice, FBI, and other organizations focus their expertise and research on the level of risk to public schoolchildren, educators, board members, facilities, and campuses. Just wondering if local boards were asked for input. In particular, did this school board have any input to this letter, and do you support their position? Once again, we are looking at the overreach of the federal government, trying to rule us from the Washington swamp, also where the NSBA is located. Further, the Attorney General should have nothing to do with this since his son-in-law is making millions as a contractor pushing CRT, Critical Race Theory, to schools, conflict of interest. I would ask the Board to follow the direction of other boards and request the NSBA to rescind their letter and ensure CRT is not taught in the Dare County School District. I would also like to address the mask mandate. I assume there was a complex equation that was used for the number of recovered, the number of vaccinated, the working, the number of tourists here, et cetera. If we measure, if we use the measures, we are never going to unmask. The measure that is used is the, it's simple. It's the number of people tested divided by the number of positive cases. So if we have 10 people tested, eight positive cases, we're going to have an 80% positivity rate. Ridiculous. I would also wonder what the number in Dare County is using for the per 100,000 with having more tourists here for a longer period of time. I believe we should adjust the population up from the 37,009 as shown on the CDC website. This would also lower the indicator and get us out of masks sooner. Let's allow the number of the, let's follow the numbers on the BEO website. We see massive drops in numbers from 9/7 to 9/17, 77 cases to 43, and 480 quarantine to 119. Where did the other 393 quarantine cases go? Guests wearing a mask didn't have much of an impact. I would also like to address the Dare Learning Academy Accountability Model. The second item listed, school safety, student conduct. So you're planning to reward bad behavior by reducing the days a student would be suspended? Their scores drop because they're suspended? How about they're lower because they don't do the work, they don't pay attention in class, they perhaps just don't want to be in school?
Mr. Bragg, your time's up. Thank you.
Hi, I certainly hope to prevail upon you as you consider voting on the masks. Many of us are gravely concerned about the conduct of Dare County Schools with respect to the adoption of control measures outlined in the Strong Schools NC Toolkit. It seems clear that the Board does not have the authority to implement these measures without a formal order from the NCDHHS or from Dare County HHS. Nowhere in the NC General Statutes does it state that school boards have the authority to oppose the use of medical devices, medical procedures, or disease control measures as a condition of in-person instruction. Now, to my understanding, the NCDHHS has failed to issue any official order regarding the threat of imminent hazard that requires specific control measures to safeguard public health. Without this order, the Toolkit is merely a set of recommendations with a one-size-fits-all policy. Specifically, the school board does not have the authority to quarantine or mask students under Chapter 130A in the General Statutes. It cannot be stressed enough that the order must be given by either the NCDHHS or Dare County HHS. To my understanding, this hasn't occurred, but I do understand that Dr. Davies is speaking tonight, so maybe there's some clarification to be had. The extended use of face coverings and masks have been documented to cause hypoxia, hypercapnia, elevated heart rates, headaches, lack of concentration, and psychological stress. Additionally, they expose children to bacteria and pathogens if not exchanged or cleaned regularly. The Board's conduct enforcing the mask policy despite children being harmed is a manifest abuse of discretion. Before utilizing face masks or other medical devices in the schools, the Board must provide informed consent and make their use optional under Title 21, rather, Chapter 9 of the United States Code. There are also serious consequences for exceeding the powers and the authority under Article 5, Chapter 155(c) of the NC General Statutes, and wrongfully exercising authority under Article 6, Chapter 130a. All of this infringes upon the U.S. and North Carolina constitutional rights of students, parents, and staff. I would ask that the members of this Board seriously consider, or reconsider, rather, their position and act prudently and lawfully. And if anyone wants to get more information on this, please visit DareToShareOBX.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brower. Next up, we have Margaret Neal.
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share. I hope you don't mind if I don't use my mask because I don't think you'll understand me otherwise. I have my friend here, Melanie, that's going to help me do a small demonstration on the carbon dioxide dangers that our children and our teachers are facing every day of their lives. She can go ahead and put the carbon dioxide. This is an industrial carbon dioxide monitor, and it measures the PPMs. So she's going to put it under her face mask to demonstrate how quickly the levels of carbon dioxide we are breathing come into effect. Anyway, I think the kids are passing out little papers to show you the different levels, the dangerous levels of the carbon dioxide. She's not even had it on. How many, not even a minute.
Lily, just the first little paper, honey.
So anyway, the first level is 400 to 500 PPMs. That's outdoor levels. Typical levels for indoors are 450 to 700 PPMs. Indoor levels with poor ventilation can go as high as 700 to 1,000 PPMs, and when your oxygen levels are insufficient, you become sleepy at 1,000 to 2,000 PPMs. Stagnant levels, which can cause headaches, drowsiness, unable to concentrate, nausea. Have your kids complained of any of this? Tachydia are at 2,000 to 5,000 PPMs, and above 5,000 PPMs, it can actually cause enoxia, cerebral injury, coma, or even death. I know that you've all read in the papers and seen on CNN. Did you take it out?
I did, because I was dying.
What are you at?
I don't know. I couldn't see.
Okay, put it back on just a week. She got up to over 10,000 PPMs earlier.
Just sitting in the hallway.
She's at 2,300, 3,100. Wait till she gets to 10,000 before you take it out, please.
I just got to sleep.
You will not pass out. Anyway, this is a danger our kids and our students and our teachers are all facing every day of their lives, and it has been reported that some kids wearing their face masks during exercise or physical sports have actually passed out, and several have even died. She is now at 39. Not quite at 5,000 yet. So we ask you, as a school board, to really do some research on this and investigate the dangers our children are facing every day. They wear their mask for eight hours a day, and she's only worn it for--
A minute.
1,900.
It keeps going up and down because it's a tiny mask. It's the little kid one, but you can tell that it elevates just by having a mask on. Why are we subjecting our children to this?
And early, it went up to 10,000 pretty quickly. So we encourage you to investigate this and not endanger our children anymore. Thank you very much.
Bethany Doyle.
My name is Bethany, and I'm a mother of three children in Dare County Schools. I'd like to first thank those on the Board that voted for Parents' Choice in the beginning of the year. Those of you that don't have kids in school, let me paint a picture for you. There's a virus that has a 99.98% recovery rate for school-aged children, and for some reason, this warrants that this demographic have their airways covered all day at school, but not anywhere else. There's no solid evidence that cloth masks or paper masks work to prevent COVID-19, but there is evidence that shows that the bacteria on their masks cause strep and pneumonia, not to mention the alarming levels of the CO2 they are breathing in. I've personally seen children pull their mask down to cough or sneeze. It's human nature. Most kids don't even wear them correctly. This is not about health or safety. It's about control. Teachers are weary of being mask-policed, and a lot of them don't even think kids should be wearing them. My daughter was told to pull her mask up, and she replied that she couldn't breathe, to which the teacher told her, "You can breathe when school is over." And he's right. Children cannot access proper amount of oxygen until the school day is over because of a mandate that forces a demographic that has the least amount of transmission to cover their mouth and nose, reducing their oxygen levels. But once you leave school property, these same children are allowed to carry on with their life without a mask: sleepovers, parties, indoor events, you name it. I'd like you to use common sense and logic on that one. We also know that the COVID shot mandate discussion is already here. You might say, "What's the big deal? Go ahead and give it. Give it to your kids. After all, it's the path to the least resistance." I'll tell you what the big deal is. We don't trust Big Pharma, and there's good reason not to. The COVID shot is not actually FDA-approved. Look it up. They approved a brand called ComorNadi, which allegedly is available in Europe. The Pfizer shot available in the U.S. is not FDA-approved. It's only available for emergency use only, and even if it does get FDA approval, it's still not trustworthy, as the former head of Pfizer now sits at the head of the FDA. Oh, and the FDA doesn't do their own testing for drug approval. The NIH does. And you know who the head of the NIH is? Christine Grady, Dr. Fauci's wife. This is a case of follow the money, not the science. Back to masks. We aren't trying to ban them. If you think the cloth mask will prevent you from getting a virus, any virus, then you should be able to wear one. If you don't believe they offer protection but rather are dangerous, then you should be able to have the choice not to wear one. Source: the Constitution of the United States. This is not Ebola or the plague. I'd bet any of you, if you thought the virus was a serious threat to your child, you wouldn't even send them to school with a hazmat suit on. There are exceptions, of course, children and adults with high-risk medical conditions. I don't take this lightly, as my husband is missing half a lung. In an ideal world, we would be guaranteed health and protection, but the reality is life is inherently risky. My children and I have a higher chance of getting injured on the way to school than we do from having a serious effect from COVID-19. Board members, I know you are getting a lot of pressure from Dr. Farley, Sheila Davies, and possibly the Governor. We implore you to use courage instead of fear when making these decisions that affect our kids. Please vote for Parents' Choice, and do not pass any more heavy-handed mandates, including a new mask material policy. You have a hard job, but who knows? Maybe you were elected for such a time as this.
Okay. My name is Gina Elko, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your ear. I'm speaking about vaccines, CDC, and VAERS. As we know, children remain en masse, and healthy children are still being quarantined, all because they are next in line for the COVID-19 vaccine. Pfizer has reported to have it available by Thanksgiving. Yet, the COVID-19 vaccines are not FDA-approved. This is an important point because our local, at a local level, Dare County Health and Human Services has advertised for 12- to 17-year-olds to get vaccinated, so I have no doubt that they might promote the vaccines for younger children as well. According to covid.cdc.gov/coviddatatracker, August 1, 2020, hospitalizations were at 1.55 out of 100,000 when no one was vaccinated. A year later, July 26, 21, hospitalizations were 1.56 out of 100,000, with 70% of adults vaccinated at least one dose. Did you know that CDC does not consider a person vaccinated until two weeks after their second injection, and this is on their site? Therefore, everyone who dies within the first two weeks is not listed as a vaccine death. Also, CDC's site states that over 80% of adverse events, hospitalizations, deaths from COVID-19 vaccines occur within 14 days of getting vaxxed. So what does this mean? It means that CDC counts over 80% of vaccine adverse effects, hospitalizations, and deaths as unvaxxed. So therefore, we have an unvaxxed pandemic, I guess. What is VAERS? I have friends that are flight medics. I was a fireman for 22 years, and I'm very shocked how many people don't know what VAERS are. Medics don't know, nurses don't know. It is basically Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System that's been around since 1990. VAERS is a national vaccine surveillance program overseen by CDC and FDA. It collects and analyzes reports of adverse events that happen after vaccines. For example, VAERS identifies a mild adverse event, verifies the side effect, is informed and reviewed by CDC and FDA. If they think that serious side effects are found, and if the risk of the vaccine side effects outweigh the benefits, they recommend to not use the vaccine. So if you look on the chart there, you'll see that in the last 30 years, the vaccine deaths of all vaccines collectively is 8,673 of all vaccines for 30 years. 2020, the COVID vaccine alone in 19 months is 15,386. Anaphylaxis, 6,300. 3,000 of those are among 12- to 17-year-olds, which 99% of those cases attributed to the Pfizer vaccine. If one does choose to vaccinate their children, remember that under the Act, the 2005 PREP Act enacted by Congress, pharmaceuticals aren't liable.
Thank you, Ms. Elko. Lynn Molar. I don't know if I pronounced that right. I apologize if I didn't. M-O-L-U-A-R? Okay, thank you. Amanda Lotus.
Hello, my name is Amanda Lotus, and I'm a parent, property owner, and taxpayer in Dare County. I'm going to read a request for North Carolina Public Records. Dear Members of Dare County Board of Education, you are being contacted on behalf of Dare County citizens for constitutional rights. A group of concerned Dare County residents organize for the purpose of defending the constitutional rights of North Carolina citizens. Dare County Citizens for Constitutional Rights requests certain records in accordance with the North Carolina Public Records Act. According to North Carolina General Statute 132-1A, it is the public policy of North Carolina that such records be made available to the public unless otherwise specifically provided by law. Dare County Citizens for Constitutional Rights and its members are seeking public records pertaining to or responsive to the following categories. All correspondences from June 2021 to October 2021 received by the Dare County Board of Education and/or Superintendent John Farley from Governor Roy Cooper, and this is to include the letter referenced in the Board of Education meeting presentation on 9/121. All records and documentation pertaining to the Dare County Schools' most recent employment contract with Superintendent-- with Superintendent John Farley. All records, documentation, and correspondences regarding the Dare County Schools' LEA applications to NCDPI, approved plans by NCDPI, and contracts with NCDPI to receive ESER and GEAR funding. All records and documentation providing an itemized accounting of ESER, GEAR, CARES Act, Coronavirus Relief Fund, funding, utilization within Dare County Schools, and/or the greater Dare community. All emails, documents, and correspondences from 9/14/21 to 10/12/21 between among Dare County Schools' teaching staff, principals, and vice principals, Superintendent Farley and his staff, and/or the Board of Education pertaining to Superintendent Farley's interim masking requirement with effective date of 10/5/21, to include emails, documents with a subject line stating a child's name followed by the words "crash course." We appreciate your prompt attention in addressing this matter. If you have any questions or concerns about this request, please contact Dare County Citizens for Constitutional Rights at DCC4CR@protonmail.com. And for the public to learn more, you can go to, to learn more about this public records request that we're making, you can go to DareToShareOBX.org for more information. And I've got those requests right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Serino.
Good evening. My name is Kate Serino and I would like to revisit the subject of ESER funding this evening. Although Mr. Farley graciously sent out an email on this subject, sadly, it did not answer any of our questions. The first question being, the email fails to clarify the $1 million discrepancy in the Dare County Schools' plan that was posted at DareToLearn on June 22nd. Posting was an ARP Act requirement. Many publicly available sources reference the actual amount to be received as consistently 8.5 million, yet the posted plan only acknowledged 7.5. It's a rather large error and it begs the simple question, why? Second item of note, Board, your superintendent posted a link to the widely accessible and publicly available North Carolina ESER plan, but failed to provide transparency and link the Dare County Schools' application, plan, or contract with NCDPI to secure these funds. Again, it's curious and it begs the question, why? Third item, Board, your superintendent states in bold type in his email that funding is not dependent on a masking mandate. Yet, the ARP Act itself, on multiple pages, states that LEAs, school districts, their plans must address the universal correcting of masks, contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine, and efforts to provide vaccinations to school communities among the list of eight CDC recommendations contained therein. Indeed, just last week, a member of this very board stated to a constituent that Dare County Schools is somehow, quote, "contractually bound to the toolkit." To what contract might you be referring? Furthermore, in a recent Washington Post article dated 9/21, and referencing states that coincidentally have chosen to ban forced masking in their schools, Secretary of Education Cardona stated that he was, quote, "willing to hold back funding if necessary" and went on to say, "I'm prepared to do it. I don't want to do it, but I'm prepared to do it," end quote. And lastly, as if we need further corroboration, we have copies of eight letters from the federal government to eight governors, all who, again, have banned mask mandates in their public schools. A portion of the letter to Greg Abbott of Texas reads, "The ARP Act requires each LEA that receives funds to adopt a plan and that plan must describe the extent to which they're adopting the policies and a description of any such policies following safety recommendations established by the CDC." And it goes on with the usual suspects, masking, contact tracing, quarantine, vaccinating, and the like. "All told, Board, it is increasingly clear that a number on a number of these fronts, public disclosure on this topic has lacked full transparency. Transparency and accountability are, in fact, further requirements of the ARP Act. Please see Page 9. While it pains many of us to believe that this Board would choose to sell the constitutional or civil rights of schoolchildren for $1,500 a head, with respect, you all work for us. We're entitled to transparency on this topic. We look forward to your responses. Those with nothing to hide tend to hide nothing. For more information, please visit DareToShareOBX.org."
Tom Serino.
Hello, everybody. As you're aware, a school board often referred to as a Board of Education is a corporate body that oversees, manages, and public school district affairs, personnel, and properties. On your own website, you have as goals and objectives to recruit, train, retain quality teachers and administrators. One of your missions is to educate every child. One of your visions is that together we will build extraordinary schools. But unfortunately, over the last several months, these meetings have become dominated with the topics of masks, quarantining, and the great toolkit debate. There are so many strings attached to that cool toolkit. We'll probably still be talking about this next year. And sadly, over sixty percent of the teachers' parents voted for masks to be optional a few months ago, and that had been forgotten. We wish a school would, would put this much effort into their educational plans and resources because just last month, North Carolina Lieutenant Governor Mark Robertson, working with the Educational First Alliance, added Dare County School District to a list of counties for having pornographic and soft porn books available to students. Now, that doesn't sound like a list we should be on. Now, did you know at DestinyDiscovery, DestinyDiscover.com, you can find these books? And which allowed us to find "Out of Darkness" by Ashley Perez. This one's listed as a historic fiction. You could find it in your high school and electronic version in your middle school. Now, I'm not going to sit here and read this to you and embarrass all of us. You can go to their libraries or you can go to DareToShareOBX.org. Later tonight, we'll post it for you. Based on the age of the citizens using these libraries, let's call it, basically Shades of Grey Junior Edition, what's going on there, okay? The good news is you have the authority over such matters to fix this. And for thorough, so as such, we're requesting you to make a motion this evening for these type books to be removed and a thorough investigation into how this was able to transpire by the end of the, by the end of the Board of Education meeting next time. Someone needs to be held accountable for approving these books just like a student is sent to a principal's office for their actions. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to lead by example. Thank you.
Next, we have John Carter.
I'm here to advocate for the reinstatement of Christian-based education in our public schools. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in another dark age of civilization. It isn't that we don't have access to information. It is that we have too many distractions that speak to the flesh and draw us away from God. In the first Dark Age, the word of God was controlled through overlords and high priests and they bent the truth to fit their own purposes to manipulate the illiterate masses. Today, today we have stripped biblical education and prayer from public schools, instead instructing children about sexual proclivities, to be ashamed of yourself because of the color of your skin, amongst other irredeemable subjects. The rot and decay of public education is on display with every burning church, business, and rotting, rioting city is on campuses. People denying absolute truths and suggesting that their relative truths be accepted. Multiple genders? Sorry. God only created two. And if you want more, they are man-made. I say here and now, man is not God and never will be. That is an absolute truth. Engel versus Vital, 1962, Supreme Court decision to eliminate school prayer in public schools. How ridiculous that a nation founded upon Christian faith should cede ground to nine black-robed individuals. From colonial charters to state constitutions, presidents, congress, judiciary, and media all have evidenced the fact that America was founded upon Christian faith. In closing, I ask, why the people of Dare County and their duly-elected representatives allow state and federal authorities to dictate what we, the people, teach our children? It is time to stop shrugging our shoulders and saying we can't do anything about it because we have to obey the authorities to get the money. I, for one, reject CRT, SEL, and all its twisted components as the war against God and Christ. I suggest you think about doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Reese Statcher.
All right, I'm going to have to speed read. Why are we here? Because ninety-five percent of our teachers have been vaccinated and our children have a ninety-nine point nine seven four percent chance of being just fine with COVID and you're still mandating a useless mask. We're here because of ESER fund money, because Dr. Farley and the Teachers Association have put that money ahead of our kids at the expense of the mandates. We're here because zero children in Dare County and an unknown amount by HHS non-data in North Carolina have died of COVID. Because more kids in North Carolina have committed suicide since the start of COVID than kids that have gotten COVID and died in the state. In 2020, there were at least a hundred and nine adolescent suicides in the state. Suicide rates since the start of COVID have gone up fifty point six percent. Every single mental health facility in the state is full, Dr. Farley. Trust me. Every single one is full with adolescent children whose mental health has been affected by the mandates and closures. We're here because unelected Sheila Davies, who we pay a hundred and thirty-two thousand a year, and unelected Dr. Farley, who we pay 200K a year, tell us that our kids need to stay masked up. Both the CDC data on why your kids should stay in masks and the quarantine, but neither of you guys can tell me how many children have died in the state from COVID and neither of you can tell me how many children in the state have committed suicides since the start of COVID. That is astounding. We're here because we know that medical doctor after medical doctor from reputable institutions such as Stanford to Cleveland Institute, Johns Hopkins, are all on record telling us that positive antibodies gained from getting COVID and surviving without the vaccine is the best solution for our children. We're here because Sheila Davies picks and chooses the data that fits her agenda and Farley follows. Contradicting medical data is ignored, selectively choosing the science that supports the ESER fund guidelines. We are aware that a student at Manayoe High School got out of quarantine early because of a positive antibody test. A precedent has been set. Why can't every child in the state be given a positive antibody test that would greatly reduce the number of quarantines? Farley, you told me that a $200 test is too expensive. ESER fund and lottery money are supposed to go towards children's education. Can't that money go towards a positive antibody test for everybody in the state? We're here because we want the seven of you elected school board members to get the guts to do the right thing like Union County and the five other counties that voted on parental choice against the NCHHS agenda and vote that Dr. Farley and Dare County are to use ESER fund and lottery money to do a positive antibody test on every single kid in Dare County. Quarantine levels would plummet. You guys would come out smelling like roses. That is, if the children are first. So are all of us up here for the children or are we here for the money?
Mr. Statcher, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Statcher. Katie Macio.
Tonight, I would like to discuss the PCR testing. PCR testing, what is invented by Nobel Prize winner Kari Mullis. He has stated that his test was never intended to be a standalone diagnostic tool. In fact, he is quoted as saying, "If done well, the PCR test can find anything in anyone." Interestingly, the CDC has issued a laboratory alert announcing that the PCR testing protocol must be pulled by the end of December 2021. The announcement can be referenced at DareToShareOBX.org. It implies that the current PCR tests cannot differentiate between influenza and COVID. This would explain nationwide flu numbers collapsing in 2020. Indeed, Sheila Davies stated at the Board of Education meeting, August 5th, 2021, that Dare County does use the PCR tests to calculate our local positivity rates. These PCR tests are also questionable in that they can be easily manipulated into reporting high numbers of false positives by simply altering the cycle threshold. Fauci himself admitted that any test run over thirty-five cycles is meaningless and can result in a ninety-seven percent positivity rate. Yet throughout this pandemic, cycles have been run in excess of this value routinely. We would ask that the Board request some pertinent information from Ms. Davies. For instance, what labs do the Dare County Schools contract with and what cycle thresholds, values are these labs utilizing? We look forward to hear the response. For more information, again, you can go to DareToShareOBX.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melanie Brewer.
Hello, everybody. My name is Melanie. I'm a resident in Kill Devil Hills. This is my daughter Lily. She's going to be handing out some court documents as well and an article that I'm going to read here about leadership and where our leadership came from. So Edgecombe School Board settles lawsuit for $190,000. A longstanding lawsuit against the Edgecombe County Board of Education and several other parties connected to the school district has been settled for $190,000. Edgecombe County School Board Attorney Deborah Stagner announced at Monday's meeting at the school board. Oh, this was written January 13th, 2021. It took five years for this court proceedings to finally go through. The settlement came about in response to the lawsuit, LB versus Edgecombe County Board of Education et al., which was filed in November 2016. The original thirty-seven-page lawsuit alleged twelve causes of action arising out of disciplinary actions taken against a female student for alleged sexual harassment by two male students during a field trip to Washington, DC on May 12th, 2016. The lawsuit further alleged that the school district violated Title IX regulations, the North Carolina Whistleblower Act, and other constitutional rights. The plaintiff was a former student at Southwest Edgecombe High School who was only identified by the initials LB. Her mother, identified in court documents as Kimberly Biggs, also was part of the suit filed after the alleged, alleged chain of incidents occurred. Biggs was employed as an elementary school teacher by the school district at the time the lawsuit was filed. Biggs and her daughter filed the suit seeking at least $120,000 in redress from the school board, former Superintendent John Farley, four teachers, two of which he actually brought with him, who were acting as chaperones on the field trip to Washington, DC, and four other staff members of the school district. The lawsuit stated that the incident occurred during a school-sponsored four-day field trip to the nation's capital. The trip reportedly involved thirty-six members of the Southwest Edgecombe High School History Club. The suit alleged that the female student was sexually assaulted in a hotel room by three male students who reportedly had been drinking and smoking marijuana. Two of the boys allegedly assaulted her while also, while another reportedly recorded the incident and shared it on Snapchat. The lawsuit also alleged that the school officials accused her of sexual harassment and suspended her for ten days. According to the plaintiff, the school also took away several honors, including the opportunity to attend the governor's school, to serve as a junior marshal, and to participate in several elite clubs at the school. The young men involved in the incident were never disciplined for their actions, the suit alleged. The school district never commented publicly on the disciplinary actions taken citing federal and state privacy laws. Why, as the Board of Education here, the seven elected officials, would you hire a leader and fill a leadership role from a district during an unsettled lawsuit at the time of, at the time of hire? He was not innocent at that time. He wasn't guilty, but we didn't know. So I'd just like to question your leadership skills and it seems to be bad decision after bad decision that we keep having these issues go around. So with all that said, I thank you for your time and I appreciate you being here.
That concludes public comment. Next, we have announcements. Dr. Farley? Dr. Farley? At the beginning of the meeting, there's papers as you walk in the door.
Thank you, ma'am chair. A few announcements this evening. For the first time, we're gonna be producing digital report cards. So, when we release report cards on October 29th, those will be digital, and they can be found in Power School. Some good news, we're very proud of, out of 115 school districts in the state of North Carolina, we are number six in the graduation rate for the second year in a row. In our five-year capital improvement plan, we have, we're working towards improve our playgrounds, particularly elementary schools. And prior to the start of the school year, I think it was actually in June before we tied up the public school budget, we went out and canvassed all five elementary playgrounds and ranked them in order of preference and need. And so, over the next couple of months, we will be updating the playground here at Kitty Hawk Elementary School and at First Flight Elementary School, and then we'll have a couple of cycles in the next couple of years to address our other elementary school playgrounds. So, I'm excited about that for our kids. We have a subcommittee of Ms. Lawler, Mr. Hester, and Mr. Woody, who is working with the Dare Education Foundation in looking at ways where we could expand teacher housing. So, we're looking over the next couple of months to explore the idea of expanding the Brunhill Ridge facility, where we currently have 24 units. We have 12 in Buxton, and we know that our teachers have a need, and we always have a waiting list. So, we'll be exploring that in the next couple of months or so. In the last couple of meetings, I've highlighted a new opportunity for teacher leaders in Dare County. So, we have a partnership with NC State University where teachers can apply for a master's program in educational leadership, free tuition, no costs to teachers, and we're excited that we had 11 applicants who have applied for that program. Two more announcements. So, on October 27th, we are gonna have our third Ignite Professional Development Session. That's a half-day for students. And then, we've got, currently still taking some applications, about 40 to 50 teachers who are gonna provide professional learning opportunities to Dare County teachers. And in the previous Ignite sessions that we've had, we've got great reviews from teachers. So, we're excited to provide that, and it's free. And then, lastly, I want to congratulate Mr. Tauber. Mr. Tauber has been inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame as a great American, and he'll be inducted on November 14th. So, congratulations to Joe. Go ahead, ma'am chair.
Thank you, Dr. Farley. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the Personnel Consent Agenda minutes from the September 14 special and September 14 regular meeting.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion by Mr. Tauber?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lawler. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have reports and items for information.
Okay, so, the first report. Okay. The first report that was coming before the board tonight is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Sheila Davies has contacted us and has a conflict and cannot attend tonight's meeting. So, she has forwarded her information in slides, which I will cover. The first...
John, I have a couple of questions in that regard.
Sure.
When did we contact Sheila to testify or come in today?
About seven or eight days ago.
Okay. And she committed to coming in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when did she decide not to come in?
Yesterday.
And what was the reason for her not coming in?
She just told me that she had a conflict.
Okay. I'm gonna object to any of the information that she's provided up here.
Joe, talking to the microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna object to information that she has given you to testify to because it's just a piece of paper. We can't ask any questions based on that piece of paper. And I would say that, as far as you're concerned, I would welcome you talking about the dashboard information, but there are personal opinions in that report that I've read from Ms. Davies, and we don't have an opportunity to ask her questions on those opinions. So, I'm really concerned about bringing that information in without her being here. I would welcome her next month to provide an update, but not this time, since she's not here.
So, I would need some direction for the board if you want to remove this as an agenda item.
Do we need to remove this from the agenda item?
It's up to the pleasure of the board, what you wanna do. You adopted the agenda. You need a motion to change the agenda, and...
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda to exclude Sheila Davies' report until she comes in and personally testifies before the board in the public on the information contained in the memorandum.
Motion by Mr. Tauber?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody. Any further... Please don't. Please. Please. Any further discussion?
I really think she needs to be here to testify her point of view and the reason why she's saying certain things, and I think she needs to be questioned on it. But I think she needs to be here.
Any other further discussion?
I disagree. I think everything that she is gonna put forward or would, that are in her slides are just gonna be facts. They are not opinions. They are facts. So, I will vote no.
We have... We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say, too, I think it would be helpful to hear it from Sheila. Any just, any questions we may have, just for clarification, because this affects the kids. So, we need to be crystal clear about our direction forward.
Please. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tauber. We have a second by Mr. Woody. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One opposed. So, we, motion carries. Four to one.
Dr. Parker, will you please take down the presentation?
So, we need to amend the agenda to exclude the update... Oh, we just did that.
Okay. So, the next item for information report is COVID-19 funding in Dare County schools. So, this is the ninth report in the last 18 months concerning COVID funding. So, where do the funds come from? They come from state funding, and they come from federal funding. Local is the one source that is not included in this list of COVID funding. So, specific COVID funds, there are three main sources. The coronavirus relief funds, also known as CRF. The governor's emergency relief funds, also known as GEAR. And then, emergency relief funds, ESER. And ESER has come in three allotments, ESER I, ESER II, and ESER III. So, the total amount of funding as of 9/28/2021, the total allotted funding is $9,343,104. Of that, expenditures are just over $2 million as of 9/28. $2,155,376.93, which means that total funding that has remained is $7,187,072. So, that funding will stretch ultimately to 2024 with ESER III. You wanna move to the next slide, Keith? So, each North Carolina funding source has a date where the funds are allotted. There's an expiration date. There's a program report code. North Carolina has a system, I believe we're only one of seven or eight school systems in the country that have this allotment system where funds go to a specific purpose, and they have a purpose of the funds. So, purpose of the funds, every COVID-19 funding source has a purpose of funds that indicates what you can use the funding for. They're categorized as program report cards, PRCs, in some examples. Example, PRC 121 is to provide a supplemental summer learning program in response to negative effects of COVID-19 for K4. So, there was a state mandate where all North Carolina public schools had to provide a summer learning program, and this actually, while this fund was directed solely to K4, we had to provide a K12 summer program. And if the board recalls, we had two sessions. We were mandated a certain significant amount of time. We had a two-and-a-half-week session at the end of June, and then a four-week session between mid-July and mid-August. Another PRC example is computers and devices. Another PR example, PRC example is school nutrition services. So, in that particular category, and there's a spreadsheet of about 19 different funding allotments, and what the funds were intended, or the purpose of the funds, and then how we've used them. In school nutrition, we use school nutrition services to provide all of the meal distribution that we had, particularly from, oh, August of last year. Then, we came back to school in October, then through the rest of the year, and we also provided meal service delivery in 15 spots around the county. So, this particular funding source would have paid for bus drivers' salaries, the salaries of child nutrition workers, all the meals costs, so on and so forth. So, those are examples of PRCs. In the public school budget, which for Dare County schools outside of ESER is about $63 million or so, there's hundreds of PRC codes, and so, you have to, when funds come down, spend the funds in these certain categories, which we've done. And again, there's still $7 million sitting out there over the next three years. Go ahead, Keith. So, this funding source handout will tell you, starting in July of 2020, going through present day, all the funding allotments that have come down in these big categories, what they're intended for, and how we've used the funding. And there's 150 copies of this sitting over on that table for the public, and anyone who wants to get a copy, so that you can see where the funding has gone and what the funding is intended for as we move forward. All the funding, except for about $33,000, was received prior to August, the August 5th vote on masking. So, if you think about that, over $9 million was received before the board voted on August 5th to have parental choice. So, the narrative that we have to, that the funding is connected to having to mask, is not true. ESER funding runs through 2024. If you recall, the $7.5 million, which we talked about at length in the spring meetings, was coming primarily from ESER II and ESER III. So, as the federal government is releasing funding through the course of time, the $7.5 that was ESER II and ESER III is where we had a deep discussion in a couple of meetings in the spring about what we would do with that with the intention to address learning loss. Several of the funding sources, particularly the ESER funding sources, the district has to submit an application to DPI to explain our plan. And then, DPI, Ms. Kinsel submits on behalf of the district. DPI approves our plan. It has to be aligned with the state plan is, and then the funding is allotted. Our primary focus of particularly the ESER II and ESER III funds, which is $7.5 million, is to impact learning loss. So, while a lot of other districts across the state are improving, they have older schools, and they have maybe putting money into HVAC systems, or they're not as advanced as Dare County schools and all the technology initiatives that we have, we have pumped our intent to pump 70, about 75% of our ESER funding into positions, and that's because teachers make the greatest difference in students' lives, and that's because teachers have the ability to impact learning loss more than any other strategy program that you can implement or roll out in the school district. Go ahead, Keith. So, the Dare County Schools' plan, the summer programs, again, were mandated. We don't know yet if they're gonna be mandated next summer. We've held back some of the funding because we know we'll have some kind of a need for summer programs, particularly in K3, and we've been doing K3 summer programs for five or six years, as long as Read to Achieve has been rolled out. Summer is expensive. So, of the $2.1 million that we've spent in COVID funding, almost a million of that went towards summer school. And there was a mandate, again, K12, we probably had about 600 kids that varied depending upon the day, who attended summer programs, summer programs from June till August, but it's costly. But again, it was a mandate. Our Dare County Schools' plan also includes personnel, and so, again, the ESER II and ESER III funding, 75% of that $7.5 million is going towards people. And so, we talked about, as we were planning, different approaches and how we could have an equitable approach to distribute funds to schools. And in the end, we had our schools come up with their plan. So, our administrative teams met with leadership teams across the district, and they all asked for people. And so, we allotted two positions to each school, and about 18 of the 20 positions are interventionists. And if you're wondering what an interventionist does, an interventionist, and we have some other positions in the district with employees who are in these roles, but the interventionists work with kids who are struggling. And so, part of our strategy is where kids have had learning loss and we need to catch them up, is to double down in literacy, double down in math, and provide them with more small group instruction. And we feel strongly that that is the best strategy to catch our kids up. And not every kid needs to be caught up, because we have a lot of kids, despite the up-and-down nature of hybrid schedules and virtual school, and some in-person and some not, we have a lot of kids who are still at grade level or above. But for the kids who are struggling and we need to catch up, this, by far, we believe, and our teachers believe, is the best strategy that we can implement. With that and supporting our teachers, we also have, and the plan can shift, I don't think we're gonna need a million dollars over three years for professional learning, but we earmarked it upfront. Our teachers ask for strategies to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of all kids, literacy strategies across the curriculum, social emotional learning, as you saw in the instructional highlights feature tonight, addressing the needs of special populations, informative assessment and screeners to progress monitor. And in education circles, that's one of our most key initiatives, because if we can assess where kids are and then address what their needs are, that's the fastest way for us to grow kids. So, that's the core of our plan, and again, we could have bought a lot of devices, put broadband infrastructures in, improved HVAC systems. Fortunately, with our newer schools, we don't have that need, but our plan has been about people. And as we move through time, and you'll see in the handout, a lot of the coronavirus, coronavirus relief funds have already been spent out. These were initial funds that came from the state. Excuse me. Swatting the fly. The ESER funding in two and three is a significant amount of money that we will be able to spend out for the next three years, and ESER III stretches all the way to 70, excuse me, 2024. One of the keys for us in, also in positions, we did the two per school. We also are trying to hire a new social worker. We've got a new school psych, and we also have hired MTS coordinators to support the interventionists. One of the tricks in all this, when you hire new people, is in three years from now... One of the tricks in all this, when you hire new people, is in three years from now, we're not going to have a $7 million budget. Of course, by that time, it might be 2.5 increase we need to keep all those positions. So as we move through time, some of the interventionists, when we get to 2023, 2024, may then absorb some other positions that we have in the district. The people focus is the most important step that we've taken in this planning process. And we've been very fortunate, while other districts across the state are struggling with teacher vacancies, and we're struggling a little bit with substitute vacancies or finding subs who want to work, we've been very fortunate to hire all those positions. And there's probably not another district in the state of North Carolina that could say that. Go ahead, Keith. I sent this out to parents on September 16th, and you can, there's a link there for this. And every time we do a presentation, a board meeting, the next day I send it out to parents and staff members. But you can see the USCD North Carolina approval announcement, and then the approved North Carolina plan. And getting back to the funding, I don't read other states' plans. I don't know what they've committed to. All I can tell you, as honest as the day is long, there's not been one thing that has come to Deering County Schools that has told us that the funding is dependent on masking. That's the God's honest truth. The copies of the diagram that I, and the handout is available. And again, everything that I put together here tonight, we'll send out tomorrow. Be happy to take questions.
Does anybody have any, Frank?
I'd just like to make a statement, Dr. Farley. With regards to the summer program?
Yes, sir.
I received a lot of good feedback back from teachers and students. And I do know it made a great difference in my granddaughter. I saw a more responsiveness from her, and I think that that was money well spent. I think a lot of kids benefited from the summer program. So I'm glad we put that forward.
Thank you. And one of the things, they mandated this, but we would have done it anyways, was we did a lot of social and recreational, and arts and crafts and different kinds of activities for kids. So it was just not construction. In fact, half the day was construction, and the other half was enrichment.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next, are you the Strong Schools?
Sure. So just briefly, the Strong Schools toolkit has been updated again. And it is highlighted in the update, the October 5th update, some new verbiage and data that's come down from the state about what we know about COVID-19 in school settings, and it researches, or references research to the Delta variant. Extends the quarantine exemption to include adults in K12 settings. So previously, this did not exist, the face-to-face, or assuming universal masking protocol did not exist previously for adults, it does now. It added some language around schools' legal authority during COVID-19, and it was kind of centered around the principal's responsibility to have to report if they're aware of infectious disease in their school or any individual who identifies. It digs down a little deeper into the roles of the Health Department versus the public school system. And then it added control measures in schools, isolation, quarantine, and exclusion. So not huge updates there. One of the updates related to this, though, is the position that Deering County Schools is in now with being able to use the seven and 10-day quarantine procedures versus what was the previously 14 days where we had socially distanced by six foot, which was very impossible to do when we have 5,200 kids in our school. So brief updates on the toolkit. Be happy to take any questions.
On the, several people have mentioned the testing for the antibodies.
Yes.
If, if someone's quarantined and they currently test for the antibodies, what's the process in getting that approved so they can come back to school?
Okay, so this would have been covered in the Davies' presentation that didn't occur. So the antibody testing has actually been one of the exemptions that's been in the toolkit since the toolkit started in 2020. So that's not new, but it's been listed as an exemption. So the exemptions are if you've had COVID and you have 90 days with the antibodies. Another exemption is you're vaccinated. The antibody exemption has been in place, and Sandy works directly with Health Department officials. We've probably had four or five cases, or thereabouts, where the Health Department has indicated to us that someone has gone and got their blood drawn in the antibody test. And in those cases, those students through the Health Department and going through that process have been able, in four or five examples, been able to come back if they were not coming back into an environment with someone who had a health condition. And so there's, and that's been in the toolkit since 2020. And so there's these requirements when you have the antibody test, okay? So getting a lot of phone calls and emails around the antibody process and what that looks like in the last two weeks. The Health Department is currently telling us that if some, if a parent chooses or a guardian chooses to get their student tested, their blood is drawn, they pay for that. It's not free like the rapid test or the other tests that's given that's free at the Health Department or providers. And the cost is about $200 or so, okay? If you have insurance, I assume that is covered. What's interesting about the antibody option now is that since Deering County Schools is, can now follow the seven-day protocols, a lot of the reports we're getting from the Health Department is that it takes sometimes up to seven days to get the blood drawn test results back. So it's almost more advantageous to go through the seven-day quarantine period, and you could be on a timeline possibly even quicker than a quick turnaround with antibodies. So part of that method has to do with how quickly, or in this case, how slowly they're getting results back.
But once you get the result, like if a parent gets the results back, what's the next step? Who do they contact? Do they contact the Health Department, or do they contact Sandy or their administrator?
They contact the Health Department, and then the Health Department makes the, they're the initial contact. They receive the information, and then they'll contact Sandy, and then you want to explain your role with looking at chronic health conditions.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, what happens after the report goes to Dr. Davies and her staff? They read the serology report.
And she makes that determination on whether, right?
She will tell me that it's positive or negative. She has no need to contact me if it's negative, but if the serology report shows positive antibodies, she will contact me. I will then talk with the schools to have the nurse at each school or wherever the child is enrolled. And we will have the nurse check the enrollment in each of the classes. At the elementary school, it's pretty simple because they're simply in one class. At the middle school and high school, we tend to have to follow the student's class schedule to check to see if there are any medical conditions of staff or students that would prevent the student from coming back with a positive antibody result.
But now that we have this other thing that's come into place, that's no longer an issue, right? Because we could isolate them at the school?
So the six-foot social distancing requirement is no longer required. So because of that is changed, then there's the scenario where kids can come back on day seven. And keep in mind, that's the scenario where they go their first five days, no symptoms, then they get a test. And if they can get the results back quickly, then after seven days, they can return. Or in the 10-day scenario, they have no symptoms for 10 days. They verify that with the Health Department, and then they could return in 10. So really, because of the shift now with the seven-day option, the need, if there was a high need, or if there was, if the board wanted to pursue that avenue of providing or paying for the antibody testing, we certainly could do that. And we could do that with COVID funds. We would have to readjust our plan. But the timing is probably, from what we're getting from the Health Department, is about the same amount of time. And in fact, the seven days sometimes works quicker.
Hey, Mr. Stetcher, please. One more time, and I'm going to have you escorted out.
Also, keep in mind, if the board did consider at some point that you want to pursue, pursue that testing option, we would have to, we would have to work to see is, who's available to provide that service, okay? There are third-party vendors, if you recall, in a few spots here, particularly, I know in the August 5th meeting and a couple of other meetings, as we've considered the various areas mitigation strategies in the toolkit, we've talked about testing versus not. And so there are some districts across the state who've done pilots where they're actually testing in their schools, and we've discussed that. And what we've got, the feedback we've gotten in that process is the third-party vendors are maxed. And so some school districts that signed off to testing schools are on two to three to four-month delays because they don't have the manpower, okay? I think the, the heart of the matter with the antibody testing is, is it worth pursuing it because it's about the same timeline as the seven-day return? And then secondly, there would be a consideration, depending upon the direction of the board, with masking policies, where, you know, present day, right now, today, actually, I didn't get today's dashboard for some reason, but yesterday, our dashboard was 16 kids quarantined and only nine active cases, 16. And on September 3rd, we had 441. So the quarantine numbers are so low that if you implemented an antibody testing procedure now, the cost would be somewhat minimal, particularly with ESER funding available. But if, but you could be in a different position if the board votes for parental choice on masking, and then the quarantine numbers looks, hopefully not, but the quarantine numbers, if there's 400 or 500, then those are different financial considerations also. So I don't think it should be necessarily a money issue. I'm just saying, I try to look at all the different possible outcomes. So is it possible? Yes. But again, the Health Department is recommending that the timeline is sometimes better on the seven days versus the additional testing that's blood drawn.
Well, I don't know if you can answer this question.
Pardon?
Sorry, I just wanted to add to that, that there's no condition on the seven day when they come back, they meet those initial requirements, and then they come back after seven days. Under the antibodies, there is still that caveat that if they could come back before seven days, we have to check the classroom to make sure that there's not additional students that are at risk.
If, see, and you're right, Joe. I wish Sheila was here, because I got some questions.
Exactly. That's the same thing, because I, I know, and part of this, and it would be nice if Sheila was here, is that we need to find out which test.
Well, and-
Because what I'm saying is that, I know that a test that takes shorter time than that and doesn't cost that much money. But I don't know if that's the acceptable one. We need, we need to be clear about what we can and can't do.
Well, if, if my, if it was my child and he got sick and got better, I'd go ahead and give him the test. And then when you call me and tell me that they're quarantined, I'm going to say, well, he has the antibodies. How long is that, see, and this is the question I would ask her, how long is that antibody test good for? I understand from CDC, I believe it's 90 days?
That, it's in the toolkit.
It is.
It is. Three months.
That's what I understood. It was to be 90 days.
And Madam Chair, there were, when it came to the part about the antibodies, there's a little asterisk at the bottom, I was trying to find it. There were some other things around that. So it will be nice for Sheila to get here.
Yeah.
The health conditions are the primary, the chronic health conditions of other individuals that that student would come in contact with is the primary caveat.
Right.
John, I have a question.
Yes.
And I'll basically preface my statement by, or question by, I know you're a PhD, not an MD. So I wanted to go through the toolkit for a second, and it says, the CDC has offered options to reduce the duration of quarantine in either of the following two scenarios. 10 days quarantine have been completed, no symptoms have been reported during daily at-home monitoring. Seven days of quarantine have been completed, no symptoms have been reported during daily at-home monitoring, and the individual has received results of a negative antigen or PCR molecular test on a test taken no earlier than five days, five, day five of quarantine. Is that the current thing that has been handed down from Deering County Health Department?
It's, I missed the one word you used when you stepped back a little bit.
He's reading from the toolkit.
From the Health Department. No, I got the toolkit part.
I'm reading from the toolkit.
Right.
And it gives, the 10-day quarantine says, have been completed, no symptoms have been reported during daily at-home monitoring. Seven days of quarantine have been completed, no symptoms have been reported during daily at-home monitoring, and the individual has received results of a negative antigen or PCR molecular test on a test taken no earlier than day five of quarantine. Okay? So that's the new policy?
That's the new procedure. Davies sent the memo out, October 5th, maybe was the date.
Here, here's the problem I have with this. The sentence above, the CDC has offered options to reduce the duration? The sentence above says, CDC continues to recommend quarantine for 14 days after last exposure. However, as of December 2nd, 2020, the CDC has offered options to reduce the duration of quarantine. I mean, we're looking at 10 months of CDC making these recommendations and it not catching up to Deering County. That's, I have a little problem with that.
Right, and so, you know-
And again, I'm not asking for an explanation. It's probably something that I'd like Sheila to answer, because, because the conditions existed in December 20, CDC is telling us the conditions existed back then, but yet we're still going out on an outdated quarantine, which keeps our kids out of school for a longer period of time.
Well, they've updated the toolkit over time, whenever it suits their need.
I'm pointing out that CDC came out with this-
Right, I'm saying, the CDC's changed, they've, they've come out, and then when they come out with something, then the tool, then they update the toolkit.
I understand that, but let's not make excuses for anybody. This, this information was known well before October something.
Right, and we covered it in December of 2020. And the default that the Health Department was consistently focused on was underneath those stanzas, it said, with physical distancing, which was a reference to six-foot social distancing. So that's why that's been applied the entire time by the Health Department until 12 days ago, or a week ago, when the six-foot social distancing requirement was dropped.
Rich, I got a quick question. I don't know if you can answer it, but I think you probably can. If we got ESER funds at the school level, do you know if the county gets COVID funding?
Yes, the county's getting COVID funding.
The county does get COVID funding, it's a significant amount of money. Sorry, Rich. The county actually allocated about $89,000 of their COVID funding to pay for our thermal temperature units. So that's been the contribution in Deering County Schools as a part of their plan.
So if we wanted to give the option of doing a test for people, we could possibly contact the commissioners to see if that was a possibility?
You, well, you, the board has the authority to amend these COVID-related funding, certainly ESER, and that does not have to go through the commissioners. So the board could ask us to amend the plan to, if you wanted to pursue some testing options, yes.
But, so my question is, could the county appropriate funds, like, like they're, they're paying for the-
Well, that's about my pay grade, and you'd have to ask the county commissioners.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm, that's my point, is this, that's my point. Is this something that-
Well, I mean, you could go to the county and ask for anything, whether it's approved or not is another story.
Yeah.
But you certainly could use COVID funding.
They oversee the Health Department, right?
Bobby Outen supervises Sheila Davies', yes.
Okay.
And in fairness, they do have restrictions on their COVID funds, just like we've got some restrictions on ours, too.
Right.
But they also have some latitude.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Does anybody have any other questions?
And just to wrap up that conversation, if the Board did want to explore that, then we would have to figure out what the path is to who provides the testing. Okay? I don't think it's gonna come from the Health Department, and more likely a third party. And then, where are we in time with availability compared to where other districts are? And I'm sure we're, be deep in the list of districts that have applied for those pilots. But we, if asked or directed, we certainly could pursue that.
Okay. Okay. That was the strong tools. So we'll move along. If nobody else has any other questions, we'll move to unfinished business. Sandy?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Again, we're looking at the second reading of Policy 4231-5021-7263, face coverings. At the last meeting, the Policy Committee recommended the policy that was presented before the Board that aligned with the decision that was made regarding mandatory mask wearing. We used the model policy from the North Carolina School Boards Association, and we, again, presented it to the Policy Committee to make minor adjustments to it to reflect the Board's opinions and desires within that policy. At the last meeting, it was, we were asking to have approval on first read, but the Board chose to let it simmer, and we'll bring it back this month for adoption on second read per policy. Again, presenting it to the Policy Committee for further consideration. This past week, we did make some minor additional changes to the language. One, in the very beginning, having to do with the very topic that you were just discussing, and that has to do with the quarantine exceptions under which the, the original policy read that all individuals, including students, employees, and visitors, regardless of vaccination status, was the original verbiage. But going back to the toolkit and wanting to make sure that we could take into consideration a positive antibodies test, or anyone who had actually contracted COVID within three-month period would also be included with that group. So the new language reads, possible quarantine exception, must wear a mask or face covering. Also, in, within this policy, the Committee recommended language that was consistent with wearing gaiters as a face covering. So that language was inserted to make sure that it was clear that that was an acceptable face covering. Then also, we wanted to make sure that the language within the section dealing with the failure to wear face covering was consistent with students not being disciplined, but being clear that failure to comply with the policy would be, the students would be excluded from school. So that is within the language of the policy, and we are presenting that to the Board for consideration and adoption this evening.
Any discussion?
My problem with this policy is that it makes teachers, principal, and staff the mass police. And I said, we are in the business of education, not policing. And we have already subjected our students to enough stress without having a policy such as the one presented today.
Do you have a suggestion on how to change it?
My suggestion would be that the only thing that we vote on is that, under North Carolina statute, that we vote every month to whether we make masks mandatory or not. Not, not a policy that tells people what sort of masks they have to wear to come into our schools. I think the better approach to it, quite frankly, is if we don't believe a child is wearing the appropriate mask, we have a conversation with the child and offer them the mask as opposed to, you know, coming down hard and just talking to people. I think maybe that's what we've lost track of, is just talking to people and appealing to common sense, as opposed to, you know, the hammer. And I'm just tired of the hammer.
The policy does state nobody would be disciplined.
I understand that. I understand that. But we're having teachers, principals act as the mass police. You're not wearing the appropriate mask. I know some of the stories that I've heard, the principals and teachers are doing gymnastics to try to determine, you know, whether they're mass experts or not. And I'd rather not put our staff or our principals in that position. So I don't want any policy on what type of face coverings are permissible in our schools.
Respectfully, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Topper, and we've had these discussions. Regardless, and I will defer to Mr. Schwartz, but regardless of the policy outlining specifically what a policy is, or I'm sorry, what the face covering must meet, I believe we are still required to follow CDC guidelines as they are dictated in and referenced in the toolkit, because that's where that language came from.
Rich, can you?
Is that, is that accurate?
Yes. You've got, in the absence of a more formal policy, superintendent has authority to and responsibility to implement the Board's decision. And the guidance that you've got is the toolkit guidance, which incorporates the CDC guidance. And those are all considered control measures that are adopted by state regulation by the Commission on Public Health. So the CDC, the CDC guidance on this is considered a control measure that's adopted under the, under the regulations.
Yes.
I understand that.
Yep.
Because we've always been referring back to the toolkit before this policy was in effect. So we still have the toolkit to fall back on without this policy. And I'm not voting for a policy. We've got the toolkit in place. I think that sufficiently covers our responsibilities in our schools.
So what do you propose that the policy say? You want the, but if we were to have a policy in front of us right now, and you wrote, what would it say?
The policy would say, and I can get you to the language, the policy would read, this policy would remain, well, not that. I was like, excuse me. At least once a month, the Board will review this policy and vote on any necessary modifications. That is, mask or no mask.
Right, but we have to have the policy. So what's the policy say?
That would, that's what it's saying.
The policy says you have to wear a mask.
Policy says that we vote once a month.
No.
Well, then, then draw up the policy.
The general statute says that we have to have a policy. So we have to vote on a policy.
I, I gave you my recommendation. You, you draw it up.
I have a question for Mr. Shaw. Schwartz, um, my mind's going about 100 miles a minute right now. I apologize for that. And what Joe's talking about, is it possible, if the, if the language that was in the toolbox alone would stand, it sounds like that would not allow us a true policy, that there's not enough depth to that policy? I will tell you, I've been dealing with this in a lot of different school systems. One of the issues that you have is, okay, what's a, for example, what is a proper mask? And the guidance in the toolkit refers to CDC guidance on the CDC website. And so if you want to figure that out, you gotta find it in the toolkit, go to the link to the CDC, find what the, what the link is in the CDC, and then come up with, okay, that's a good mask, that's not a good mask. That's an acceptable mask, that's not an acceptable mask. For example, the gaiters portion that's added to this policy on page two adds, including gaiters made of at least two layers of tightly woven, washable, breathable fabric. So if you go to the CDC guidance and, and look up the gaiters, it tells you it's gotta be at least two layers for the gait, for the gaiters. But in order to get there, you gotta find it in the toolkit, go to the CDC guidance that's linked there, find the proper thing on gaiters, and then come back and do it. Whereas here, you've got it in front of you. So that's one possible advantage of having it all in one place, you know, summarized, so that there's not an ongoing debate as to, okay, well, who told you had to be two layers of gaiter instead of one layer of gaiter? And it's the CDC, right?
Right, and the CDC, and the CDC, hey, please stop. The CDC said that you can double the gaiter.
Yes.
Yes. So if it's a single gaiter, you can double it, and it still counts. One more outburst, please.
So what I'm hearing is that the, the items that are put before us are the same information that's in the toolbox, it's just consolidated into one spot?
And is it also inconsistent with CDC?
That's correct.
And, and it's, it's, in some instances, it takes the links from the toolkit that incorporate the CDC guidance that's referenced in the control measures in the state regulations adopted by the Commission on Public Health. So instead of going from here to there to here to there to try and figure it out, having it in the policy may be helpful. And so that's, that's, you know, that's one potential advantage of having a policy.
Well, and the legal stat, the legal reference, we have to have a policy. Right?
You're supposed to adopt the policy, yes.
And we have to do that in this meeting because we didn't, we have to adopt this policy, at some form of this policy tonight. But we're gonna have to have a special meeting before the end of the month.
There's no deadline in the, in the law. There's a requirement that you vote at least monthly on whether to revise your policy, but you're supposed to adopt the policy in the first place. Now, you can debate whether it's a policy, policy in the policy manual, or whether by adopting what you've already adopted, the mask policy, that's sufficient. And, you know, there's no good answer to that.
Richard, there's no requirement that we, we actually standardize what masks are in a policy, standardize what masks are acceptable in our school policy, is it? Is there?
There's no requirement that you put that in your policy. There is a requirement that you have a policy on masks.
Right. Whether to, you know, parental choice or not have masks, or mask or no mask, right?
You're, you're, yeah, that's, that's one thing. But, you know, is a Halloween mask gonna be okay? Is a Plexiglas mask that the CDC says is not good gonna be okay? What, so what's your standard there on a mask?
Well, are
Is it, you know, the Lone Ranger mask, or?
Well, I understand, but we, we've been in school for, since August, and it hasn't seemed to be an issue where I think everybody is wearing some mask that is considered acceptable to get into our schools. So I don't really see the, quite frankly, my opinion is I don't see the issue for standardizing what masks are required or not required in our schools, because I think people have understood what those, you know, mask requirements are.
There have been some issues in the schools.
My, there have. They, it appears they've been resolved, though, and, and resolved in a manner of, in my opinion, by common sense, by having a discussion with the parents who say, that mask is inappropriate. Would you please put on a mask that's appropriate? And they have. And so I understand that there's no issues with the masking as it stands today.
There's, there's still some outstanding issues. What, what is helpful from an application of a policy standpoint is to what Rich has referred to. Right now, you have to go to page nine of the toolkit, the third sentence in the toolkit, the fourth link in that paragraph takes you to the CDC website that describes what masks are. If the, if the, regardless of what you put in a policy, if it's black and white in policy, though, we don't have to do this dance between the toolkit, CDC, and then application locally. So up till August 5th, we were following those guidelines. And then, once it was parental choice, then we're under another set of guidelines. And then September 1st, now we're back to following the CDC and the toolkit protocol. So from an application standpoint for administrators and for the public understanding, what is considered a proper mask or not, or whatever, you know, are you having disciplinary counts or not, consequences or not, which we certainly are not in favor of, clarity in the policy would help tremendously.
Back to my original comment, because just my opinion. We, we seem to, with this policy, we're gonna be making teachers mass police and principals mass police. And I, I think we don't need to continue to stress people out with these policies.
But I
You can, you, you can vote on it.
I understand.
Okay.
Well, I have to have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I, I move we adopt Policy 4231-5021-7263, face coverings as requested.
Is there a second? I would second the motion. Is there a vote? Is there all in favor? We have a motion by Ms. Lawler, a second by myself. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
You're voting aye?
Aye. Only because it seems like we are doing the item that is put before us as a requirement, but it also allows us each month to come back and look at this again. It does not sound like there's anything outside of the toolbox. It sounds like it's all the things that's inside the toolbox.
Okay, so we have, motion carries three to one.
Three to two.
I mean, three to two, I'm sorry. My bad. All right. I gotta look. I have the old agenda. Okay, next we have Dare County Board of Education Legal Representation. And
We have another problem.
First reading of policy, 7430.
Oh, sorry. Oh, that's right, you added that. My bad.
Nope.
Yep. I had the old. I don't know why I have the old one in front of me.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry. First reading and approval of revised policy, 7430, teacher substitutes.
Yes, and as we discussed briefly earlier, we've had some issues with securing subs. And we have been using our teacher assistants, in some cases, to fill in where necessary so that we could have a continuation of instruction in the absence of a teacher. There are some conflicting information within the North Carolina Employment and Benefits Manual that states that teacher assistants can be paid at a beginning teacher daily rate. Our current policy indicates that a teacher assistant can be paid at a teacher's daily rate, which is according to state regulations. But it indicated that the teacher assistant would have, had to have been assigned to the teacher or teachers in order to be able to be paid at that higher rate. So in other words, we have teacher assistants who are assigned to kindergarten and first-grade classes in every classroom across the district. If a teacher assistant was needed to substitute in a fourth-grade class, for instance, and we could pull someone from the first-grade class to cover because of the need, that they would not necessarily be eligible for the higher rate of pay in, in covering for a teacher, because they weren't assigned to the fourth-grade class. So what we would like to do is to provide some clarity and some consistency with what is in our state policy manuals and correct that in our local board policy. And if the Board is agreeable to it, do that this evening so we can make sure that we can implement that right away.
Sandy, would you, you be opposed to waiving of the second reading for this policy?
No, in fact, I would encourage it.
Okay.
So what was your question, Joe? We're gonna waive the second reading?
You need a motion to waive your policy requiring two readings.
Posing the question to Sandy whether or not she would recommend that, and your recommendation?
I would recommend that the board waive second reading and adopt this evening.
Then I'll make that motion to waive the second reading of this particular motion in that we vote on this policy today and implement it.
A motion by Mr. Tauber to waive the second reading.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hester. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, you'll adopt the policy now?
Yep.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the revision of Policy 7430, teacher substitutes as requested.
Motion by Ms. Lawler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tauber. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Dare County Board of Education Legal Representation. And you're, you have all received a letter that we received from Mr. Schwartz's office.
My computer's dead.
Yeah, oh. Does anybody have any questions about the information in the letter? The letter states that Schwartz and Shaw is separating. So we, the board needs to advise as to the following. All of the matters unattached, all of the matters should remain with the entity of Schwartz and Shaw. All matters should be handled by Pointer Spruill and transfer current files. Matters should be handled by, which ones should be handled by either or, or we're going to retain a different firm. So... Rich, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, except that I'm sorry, we're having to ask and make this decision. This is, you know, a firm has been around for 31 years. We lasted a lot longer than the Beatles. And I think we made some good music together, and hopefully we will as we go our separate ways.
Does anybody have any questions? So I need a motion on one of those four.
Madam Chair, I move that we keep all legal matters with Richard Schwartz in Exhibit A. I move that we keep all of our legal matters with Exhibit A, which would be with Richard Schwartz.
Put on your, put on your...
My question be, would be for how long?
Currently, it'd be for the remainder of the contract, which is through June 30th.
Okay, and that's...
Did you want to say anything else?
I, I do.
Okay.
My motion would be a little different. My motion would be that we retain Richard Schwartz on a month-to-month basis, and at the same time, do an RFP for legal representation. And there's just too many unknown things going on with this particular time.
All right, hold up, we got two. So are you willing to revise your motion? Okay. So we have to vote on Margaret's motion. Is there a second? Okay. I would second the motion. I'm seconding Margaret's motion.
Will it be a chance to amend that because?
You could, we could, we could, six months from now, we could say, "This is not working out," and we can, we can stop it. We can change. We can do...
That's correct.
We could do an RFP at any time that we decided to, correct?
That's correct.
Right. The only thing that contractually we're holding, we're agreeing to is the financial part of it with the retainer and the fees, right?
That's correct.
It's not really, it's like, un, it's not really holding us to that January 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th, I'm sorry.
Well, that's the existing arrangement, but that's, you know, that's going to be up to you.
It's just an agreement to the financial end of it. We can, we can change legal representation at any time. So I'm going to say this again, just to be clear. The Margaret's motion is for the Board of Education to retain Richard Schwartz, uh, Richard Schwartz and Shaw, PPLC. The matter's in Exhibit A. I seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries three to two.
I still think we need to do an RFP before his contract is done. I mean, it's just...
We can do an RFP at any time. We can certainly have that discussion.
Well, I think we need to go ahead and start that process, you know.
Do we have to vote on that? To start that, to do a RF, just...
That would be something you could vote on, it's up to you if you want to do that.
You want to make a motion?
I would prefer that we wait and do that when the other two board members are here, in all fairness. I think it could certainly wait till next month to give them an opportunity to know what's, you know.
I'll go along with that.
Thanks, Joe, I appreciate that. Okay, is there any other things to discuss? Anybody else have anything to say? Okay. With that, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we've got the additional item on the donation.
Manio High School donation.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, yes, 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 yes. We have new business approval of the Manio donation. Dr. Farley?
So Board Policy 8220, which is titled Gifts and Bequests, mandates that when the school district receives a donation over $5,000, it comes before the board for approval. Last Friday, we received a kind gesture offer by Mr. Finn Geddy, who's willing to donate $10,000 to Manio High School to their athletic booster club, is a second phase of their upgrades in their weight room, and the $10,000 would be earmarked specifically, purchase dumbbells, cardio equipment, and other training equipment for Manio High School students. Mr. Geddy, I believe the last year, gave a $50,000 donation to Manio Middle School. So we're very thankful. Looking for board approval on the $10,000 donation, $10,000 donation to Manio High School Athletic Boosters.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tauber to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Please thank Mr. Geddy.
Yes, and thank you to Finn. He's done some amazing stuff for our schools. Okay, with that.
Madam Chair, a motion we adjourn for the...
Adjourn.
Adjourn, that too.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Hester.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tauber. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.